Time now is four o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, you take your roll call, please.
Deb.
Present.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Todd.
Here.
Welcome, visitors, guests, media. Got a nice agenda here today on first meeting in June, kind of a little bit of a different day, having it on Thursday versus Tuesday with the election. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone will be abstaining from any items on the agenda for financial conflict of interest.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment for the record.
Are you abstaining on anything?
I just have a comment before I make anything else. Most of you are aware that both of my brother laws are attorneys. One was Circuit Court Judge Don Erickson. I spent eighteen months on federal grand jury duty with Karen Schreier, who's a federal judge now. That was one week out of the month. I worked for Dave Hunoff as deputy, and I went to school at USD and lots of professors down there, law professors, including Mike Roach has got three law degrees. And he never, all of those people never taught me to make a decision before I heard the evidence and all the things that were talked about. So I don't know how you can force me to abstain when I haven't heard the comments or the plea or the, no matter if it's about CAFOs or whatever. So that's what I'd like to have.
Well, here's a question for you, Mr. Swenson. Have you reviewed the packets with all the information in it that has the preliminary information today?
I just made that statement for you.
Well, that's my question, though. There's a packet of information put together for every commissioner with the basic fundamentals of each item on the agenda. Have you had a chance to review those?
No, I have not. But like I said, that was a statement that I learned from all those people, to not make a decision before the evidence or to make an arrest before probable cause. So.
Well, that's why we have the packets to look at, so we're prepared before the meeting?
Yeah.
So are you abstaining from any items on the agenda?
I don't know yet.
Any other commissioners have any financial conflicts of interest they need to abstain from?
I do.
You do?
Don't.
No.
All right. Is there any abstaining we need to do for non-financial interest?
No.
No.
All right. Any additions or changes for today's agenda?
I think you didn't, you didn't put me down for the term limits that I asked to be put on, on the agenda for this time.
That's because we asked you to get with the state's attorney, and the state's attorney said you never contacted him after multiple times. So.
Okay, well, let's put it on next meeting then.
We can put that at the end of the meeting. We can discuss that. Any additions or changes for today's agenda? Hearing none, I take the motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Ray, Deb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the May 1st? And we also have the May 15th minutes. We'll go, we'll need two motions.
Move approval of the May 1st, was it May 1st?
Yes.
Minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Next is the May 15th meeting agenda minutes. Has anyone had a chance to review those minutes? And if so, and there are no additions or changes, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the May 15th minutes?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. First agenda item today is the primary election canvas. And Patty, I believe, has given us the information here.
Yes, and we have one provisional. And I did have the board come in, three of the precinct workers, that determined that the, we did count the ballot. And the totals, the first page is the totals from the election night. And then the report for each vote center and total of votes.
What voter turnout was, how much? Does it stay on the actual turnout? As the paper and the press had run, 20, 25%?
Yeah, it was low.
Okay. Any questions of Patty in regards to the canvas?
And if you want to check, it will be off the, if you look on the first page, it is off the provisional ballot.
You just want to clarify that to everybody?
Yeah, what does that mean?
For US Representative Dusty Johnson, the machine, when we totaled the ballots on election day was 1,0163. And with the provisional, it was 1,0164.
Okay.
So we're adding that provisional on to the
Correct.
The final count.
And that'll be checked, the state further can.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Patty and her team for their hard work that day and all, and the other poll workers. I think it was a long day, and with the small issues we had with the software, it made it even more difficult. So thank you, Patty, for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Any other comments in regards to the election? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the, what was I supposed to say here, the canvas?
Yep.
The canvas of the
As provided.
As provided up for the June 5th election.
Make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ray, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Ray, you want to sign that and pass it down? We only assign that certification.
All right. Next item on the agenda will be claims. Has everyone a chance to review the claims for today's meeting? If there are no questions on the claims, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the claims.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead.
Give that one to Don.
This is what he's bothered to do.
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the May payroll. Has everyone a chance to review the May payroll? If there are no questions on the May payroll, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the May payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the River Aspen East New Road District. Patty?
And they just presented the petition to the Talon New Road District. And we will have, if approved, we will have an election. And then it'll be back to you guys for more approval.
Refresh my memory in regards, there's eight signatures out here. How many signatures do they need on the petition to put it to a ballot? I mean, for their, for their, whatever district they're going to have?
It's a percentage of lots.
Of landowners.
And they've met that, their requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
And River Aspen is down by the river.
Yeah, that's right. They're one Chalkstone, half Sisters Grove.
Chalkstone, correct. So there's only one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, looks like 12 lots down there?
Randy, is this?
Might be a few more lots. It's up the, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
According to this plat we've got here, it looks like 12. Maybe there's more.
Yeah, I've been down there. I know they've been talking about this. I've had some meetings with the residents about it. So.
Yeah, it's just that outlined area. So there's 12 that are in this road district.
Any discussion on this road district before we entertain a motion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion on the road district.
Move approval of the road district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is Troy Cowman with the ambulance department on bids for a new ambulance.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I believe you all got in your packet the three bids that we received for the purchase of a new ambulance that was requested in the budget this year. And Steve and I opened up those bids last week, went through them, and there were two of the three that did actually meet the specs that were listed in the ambulance bids. And as you can see, that the low bid went to Pack Fire Safety USA. Total cost of building the ambulance, 153,059, and they are going to give us a $5,000 trade-in for the 2001 ambulance that we have sitting there, the old one that we're going to replace, which is, which is a good deal. That's a lot of money for that ambulance. You can see the other ones, the Feldfire gave us 2,250 for that same ambulance, and the Allegiant Emergency Services didn't give us anything at all for it. So it's a 2001 ambulance. It's got 200,000 miles on it.
Rode hard and put away wet.
Yeah, exactly. It's definitely seen its service, and it's come to the point where we really haven't used it much in the last couple of years just because of all the miles that it has on it. So we would, we would like you guys to accept the bid from Pack Fire Safety. They actually are out of Rochester, Minnesota. They brought down a spec ambulance for us the other day. We looked through. Looks like they're a good company, provide high-quality ambulance for us. So that's one that we would like to go with.
What kind of chassis does this one go on? Is it a Chevy chassis that it is?
It's going on a Chevy chassis, which is the same thing that we put our remounts on over the last several years. We've had pretty good luck with the Chevy chassis. It will be another four-wheel drive. So once we get rid of the older ambulance and get this one, all of our ambulances in the garage will be four-wheel drive ambulances.
Any questions for Troy?
Are they gas or diesel?
They are diesel ambulances.
Any other questions for Troy? As you all recall, with these ambulances, part of the ambulance budget every year, they put away a little bit every year so we can, so we don't have this one big hit in one timeframe. So there's money in the budget for it. They've been saving every year for it. So is this going to be, are we replacing the box, so to speak, in the back and remounting it?
Yeah. The last three purchases that we made have just been remounts where we've used the old, we've taken the patient compartment and pulled that patient compartment off of the old chassis and then mounted it because it was a cost savings. This truck is old enough that we just think that it's going to be in our best interest to replace the entire truck. We haven't purchased a brand-new ambulance since 2009, I believe was the last brand-new ambulance that was purchased. So we've got the other three ambulances that are sitting there now. We have a 14, 15, and 16 chassis, and those are all rebounded boxes. The company that did that for us did an excellent job on remounting them. They're in good shape and can be used for a long time. With this one, we just decided we needed to go in with it.
Or assuming after time, some of the chassis, the design from the older models to the new models may be just a little bit different, or sometimes it doesn't quite fit?
Yeah, there really is. I mean, the boxes are different lengths themselves, they're different heights, sometimes different widths. So it's sometimes hard for the manufacturers to be able to find a chassis that'll fit some of those boxes as well, just depending on what the specifications are on that box as well. But they have, they have remounted a similar box for us at this other company. But again, this one is just to the point where it just needs to be replaced.
Any other questions for Troy in regards to the ambulance bids? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move approval of acceptance of the ambulance bid.
The low ambulance.
Which, which bid?
Well, recommended by the ambulance.
Pack Fire.
Number one, four.
I'll second his motion of approval of the Pack Fire and Safety ambulance at a cost of 148,059. Plus 5,000 trade-in.
That's including the 5,000?
Yeah, minus, 153,09 minus 5,000.
Got it. Got a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, guys.
Any signature?
You are looking a lot like your dad.
My god.
More and more every year. Sounded like you too.
Yeah.
It's funny how that.
I think it's only copies. I assigned copies to her.
All the trust.
Thanks, Troy.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have just two plats, a Backley plat and a Blakie plat.
Wow, how could that happen?
Well.
Backley, Blakie.
Two different entities with this very similar name. So is, yes?
Just on the Blakie hat.
That's a Backley.
I know, but.
But does it have to be Sealer? Or does it have, in the, in the, can it be Blakie?
Or does it have to be Sealer?
No, it's Blakie. That's what he wants to name that.
Backley.
Could I put the name who owns it?
That's fine.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I get it right in the minute.
No, that's fine.
Backley.
So is there, would this be the consent agenda item? Is there anything that needs to be pulled out of the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Deb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, will you jot down on the end of the agenda that had the discussion about going to, here under that CAFO meeting?
want to touch on that right now, actually?
Yeah, I just, I just saw an email from Christie at Trigibson that there's a training meeting on environmental aspects of CAFOs, and it's in here on the 27th of June. I was planning on going.
Is that what the county on our official phone?
You said June 27?
Yeah.
Well, we got a little bit of time. The, if you haven't been, didn't know, the County Highway Department now has their own Facebook page. They're doing a lot of pictures of all the projects that they're doing right now out at, on the county. So anybody is a Facebook user and wants to see some of the pictures and the videos, it's very, they're doing a really good job of communicating out to the public on it. So they got it going last week on Monday or Tuesday, but.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, they've got the Chip Seal project going on 301. They've got the big grants, rehabs are going there as well. Not to mention the bridge replacement up in the Turkey Valley. I think they're pretty close to, that one is almost, one of them is about done. So I don't know about everyone else, but the pictures and the videos really kind of speak volumes on what they're all doing up there. So if you're a Facebook user and you want to know what the Highway Department's doing, it's been very, very well-received. So. With the Board of Adjustments, we have to do that on time. So we have about 10 minutes of, before we can go on the next agenda item.
Where's the, I think I understand Old Highway 50. But where does that officially start in the end?
Well, Whiting Drive, it turns into 309th by Fleek's. It's Whiting Drive from what I, if you watch the signs, up to there. And then a mile, but the Volin Oil is where it stops, and it turns, the county still takes care of that till, for one more mile till County Line. And then after the County Line, it's gravel, four road, and then dirt. Four mile and dirt.
I just forgot to do that.
Two, county one?
County one, yeah.
Got it.
Just also a reminder, on the 19th of June, our next meeting, that evening is the Ag Gala. If anybody wants to attend, we make sure that we, if there's going to be more than three of us here, we'll have Patty just put a notice in the paper that there's a possible quorum. I do plan on attending on the 19th.
What date? What date?
It's Tuesday, 19th.
Yeah.
Are you going?
Yeah.
You're 19th?
Yes.
I planned on going.
Okay, we've got it. We need the notice.
Well, you just put a notice out there, Patty, on that?
And where's that at, Tom?
It's at the, 4-H Grounds at the Quanis Ice Ring.
Got to register. 50 bucks.
Register online by Friday. And they need to get the number account for food. So.
I've got two things that don't have time. So I could cover one of them while you're waiting.
We got time.
One of them on the agenda there is permission to put some posters. And it's going to be into, but these are examples of what, there isn't, I don't have a protocol, but I would like to put these in the bathrooms of the courthouse or the government center. I got them from Helpline. And I'd just like to receive permission. And then, you know me, I'm always looking for protocols. So is there something we should do to, like, should I go, can we set something up where we talk to the building supervisor so that they can run these by us? So we wouldn't have to do this type of, or do you want to do it this way?
I think we probably should have some sort of, some sort of process in place, just so.
I mean, are you going to just stick them to the
Helpline will update these to.
Stick them to the wall. I mean, it'd be better if it was a bullet board. We have those glass things they could be inside of.
But I don't know if they could go in that glass thing.
And part of that glass thing is legal notices only. But we could work with him and see what we can do with that. But if that seems suitable with all three.
Can't you put a nice little frame on? That would be nice.
Yeah.
And I'll talk to Jeff and make sure we.
A frame would be good if it's changing out.
What about over at the courthouse itself?
Well, I guess I might need to do over there, but I can certainly get you out.
Well, for me, it's, for me, I don't see any reason why not. On the county portion of the courthouse, I'll talk with Jeff over there, too. We probably should have some sort of policy in place, make sure we have.
Put it inside the bathroom?
Yes, these go in the bathrooms of each. Over here, we have, in this building, we have six of them.
That's fine.
Male and female on each floor. So then that's where it's with it. In this, in this building, but I can talk to Jeff and see what he would want to put it over there in those, if that works. And I don't know what policy they have over there either.
No, I think that's, that's appropriate.
We got a minute here. I'd like to put a sound out for the Highway Department. The other day, I was out putzing around, and I come across, Brian was there with his lead man and was talking with somebody, so I stopped so I could interrupt their party. He had the guy from Holiday, the ones that are putting in bridges, and they were by a bridge, looking it over. And so they filled me in on process. I feel Brian does a very good job of going out and seeking advice. And that is what he was doing in this regard. The, the structure that he was looking at, this one has a plank, a railroad plank. So a railroad plank is what, 14, 16 inches tall, about three and a half inches wide. And this structure has them stood up going down. That's how they built the bridge. But that, what, what the mindset was, is it's over in a concrete abutment. And what has the moisture done? You know, that's very solid, bridge plank. But what do the abutments looking like where it sets on the concrete? And they were talking about new, Holiday dude was telling them about, you can pre-make a, at that length of a structure, a steel design. You pull this out and you put that one in. It's a pretty simple process. So I sat there for about a half hour, 40 minutes, and listened to them talk. And it was very good. It was very interesting to hear, and it was encouraging to see that our Highway Department is looking at aspects to help the county out in many ways. So.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
We still have a few more minutes before it's 4:30. I may just give you a little re-review of what happened. I was out in DC with the Yankton Chamber of Commerce flying May 21st through the 24th. Flew in and revived on a Monday evening. And our first meeting was on Tuesday. We met with the USDA, talked to anyone from natural gas, sewer district, housing aspects. Met with Senator Rounds, Senator Thunes, and Congresswoman Noem's office. Also met another different branch of the USDA on Wednesday, along with the US Corps of Engineers. Talking with the USDA, they have some programs available for, for natural gas and some of the things along there, and sewer districts as well. The sewer district was pretty interesting in regards to our population. There's probably some opportunity there. And Pat and I will probably talk about that some other time, so I can share that information with Pat. But in regards to the natural gas, we've talked about some of the costs, anywhere from 30 to 80 to 100,000. And right now, there is no.
Million.
Our million, excuse me. We take 100,000. But 100 million, and with the USDA, there's not really any program out there to cover that big of a cost. I think the biggest opportunity is around a $25 million loan. So there's, there's some good information in regards to it, on something that the chamber is involved, YIPG, the city was there. So there's, there's a good representation of Yankton County leadership groups that will maybe help to kind of piece together some of those issues that we saw. Another thing I found very interesting, we know about our cell phone coverage and how kind of spotty it gets to further outside of town. There's actually some things going on this year in regards to the cell phone coverage and maps out there about data, and actually, I think even also in regards to wireless or cable. And I don't think, I was talking to Pat, I don't think it's something he knew about. I don't know much if even District 3 knew about. So we got some of that mapping information. We've, we're going to check, make sure everything's valid for our county, so we can make sure we maximize that and keep progressing forward. So.
Are you all aware of the tower currently being built just outside Gayville? Okay, so there's tower.
You've got a couple minutes yet.
There's 100. Gayville does its own zoning, and Gayville also has its own ETJ. So one mile outside Gayville, they do their own zoning. So. So, um, we were able to, um, understand what the project was because of floodplain. So we determined floodplain, but the project has started this spring. It's 190-foot cellphone tower by, it will be done by what's called Harvorth Tower Company and it sounds like it's going to be a Verizon will be the first carrier on it. So again, taking up more of that space. And then currently we're negotiating right now and working with, um, two towers. One would be on 300th or, uh, up there on, um, on Highway 81 and 300th and the other one is just outside Leesterville to the southeast of Leesterville. That one's a 300-foot tower and the one that we're talking about up here on 300th Street is a, um, 190-foot tower. So they're in process, so, so we should start moving forward on more. They're ready to start doing some process and start getting them the boards. So I think by the end of summer, we should have permits for, for those two, I'm hoping.
Who's tower?
Good to hear.
Whose tower is the one over there on Landstop?
That is done by a company called SBD and they're out of Florida.
So where will this new one be from there?
This new one will be just outside, um, just east of the, uh, school. Just east of the school, about a half mile.
Okay.
And, uh, they're out there clearing the ground right now. They just did the boring's last week.
Is that Freeburg?
No. Nope, it's not Freeburg's, but back behind there kinda, yeah, up by the junkyard.
Okay.
That's where that one is, so.
Excellent. Uh, can I get a motion to go into Board of Adjustment?
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're in Board of Adjustment. Pat, first is conditional use permit for a Kneifel.
So for the first one there that you have in front of you would be the variance for maximum accessory structure size and, uh, the planning commission recommended approval based on findings of fact dated May 8th for maximum accessory size requirement from 2,000 square feet with a 14-foot sidewall to 3,168 square feet with 11, 11-foot, 4-inch sidewalls in a low-density rural residential district in Yankton County. Said property is legally described as tract one, Kneifel addition, southeast quarter, southwest quarter of the south, of section seven, township 93, range 56. Here and now referred to as Utica South Township, county of Yankton, state of South Dakota. E-911 address is 31072, 434th Avenue, Yankton, South Dakota. And the planning commission voted unanimous, as you can see. As we worked through this, this was a bit of a, um, we went through this a couple of times and Kelly would go back and we'd visit with neighbors and things and we ended up with the structure that the materials were earth toned, it met the yard requirements, the site was selected to reduce viewshed impact, and the proposed size was reduced from previous applications.
Nearly by 50%, wasn't it?
Yep. Yep. And so, um, this one ended up being a much smaller, it's only 58% larger than the zoning district requirement. And so he met and, um, most, and the testimony that we got from most of the neighbors was that they felt that they were working towards a compromise.
Any questions for Pat in regards to the variance? From the commission? I'll open up, is, I don't see the Kneifels here for the applicants.
Randy Johnson, I'm representing Kelly.
Oh, absolutely, please.
I have some, this son Brandon is also here to answer any questions you might have. Kelly, Kelly, I apologize for not being able to attend this evening, he's out of town.
If you go ahead and, uh, just go ahead and state what the Kneifels are...
Well, again, what the Kneifels are doing is, as Pat alluded to, um, what they're looking at, as you recall, a couple of months ago, they were in here and they had a variance on a building that was 6,768 square feet with 16-foot sidewalls. It was a Morton Steel building. Um, it was previously narrowly rejected by planning and zoning and actually unanimously rejected by the Board of Adjustments. So Kelly went and met with the neighbors, as, as discussed, um, and came back with a different plan. And so what he's proposing today is just what we talked about. It's a wooden barn, commonly referred to as a house, house horse-style barn, but there's no horses or livestock that are going to be there at all. The structure is a 44 by 72-foot, 3,168 square foot structure, 11-foot, point, 11-foot, 4-inch sidewalls. The peak height at the center section is 27 feet 6 inches tall and it's got eight 12-pitch, excuse me, roof pitch. The lower roofs on the side have a 312 width roof pitch with 10-foot overhangs on both sides. Structure's going to be both stained, a woodboard and bat siding with cedar clad post. The color will generally be a brown color to match the aesthetics of the house. And again, the purpose of the barn is to be an insulated workshop and equipment storage facility.
Randy, how many square feet again?
3,168 square feet. With, with zone one R, that's a maximum size of 2,000, so we would be approximately 1.6, I think is the number.
You know, I can state from the first time they came with this 6,000-square-foot steel box, this, there's a great improvement over, um, what that was to what it is now and it does, they attempted to match the house, the appearance of the house with the cedar posts and, um, it just, it showed that he had listened to what we said and that he modified the, the design as well as talked to the neighbors to meet their, um, concerns.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's good to note that the placement of the building on the land is the same position that he had the other building, but, um, on the east side, it's, it's 100 feet from the north, at least 100 plus feet from the north boundary. And on the east side, there's plenty of trees, um, that, that protect the site of that. And I would say that from the north side, there's still some protection from trees that are existing out there.
And how many neighbors, uh, did they contact that had no objection?
A number of neighbors were contacted individually and asked for. I, I don't have any specific names, Gary, as to anybody that was opposed to it. I, I figured if there was, they would show up to see me.
They would send a letter?
Sure. I don't know about the letter. I would assume they follow protocol.
It's in your packet.
Numerated letters, if you don't review the packet.
So nobody objected?
It's got 45. The only one that's in your packet there, there is a, are you, you finished that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only one that, that was discussing a little bit was a Mrs. McDermott. And Mrs. McDermott lives directly to the north and, um, she was discussing viewsheds and how can the viewshed, maintain the viewshed? And she, but it doesn't impact, it, she will see it, but it's not blocking her view, but it's a viewshed issue that she discussed. And, um, we have no ordinances in our ordinance nor anything that we have that we can say we have to protect viewsheds. We don't protect viewsheds.
Sure.
And so, but she did say that they aligned...
Did that happen? Yep, saw the house.
Yes, yep. And she, um, Jerry Mueller asked the same question and he's also a neighbor there, too, during the hearing. And, um, Kelly and Jerry had talked about it and they aligned the building more of a south-north alignment. And then Jerry said that helps a lot with viewshed and then Mrs. McDermott was, that's better. She'd rather not, but it's better.
Yeah, so, so everybody's okay with it?
So, it's, you know, Mrs. McDermott, I would say if you asked her if she's okay, would still shake her head negative. But it's, but in the same context, there were several things that were done to appease a lot of that. But we cannot, we can't be in the viewshed. That's, we don't have any regulations in viewsheds. So we have to be very careful.
You know, we talk about viewsheds and there's some lots in front of my house that just sold, somebody builds in front of us that block my view, but I guess if I don't want that to happen, I should buy that property.
Yes.
That's the only thing we have right now. There are no, yes. And, and to do, just to, just to put it in perspective, too, how would you legislate or regulate viewsheds? Because my viewshed's a lot different than, it's, it's, it's like so many of those things, it's very subjective. So viewsheds are very difficult. Sometimes you'll see them dealt with in covenants, but again, this doesn't have covenants on it.
And part of that, as, as you look at the building design, the, the peak is 27 feet 2 inches, which is within inches of the previous building. The more importantly, what we did on the second building, we used an 812 pitch. So that obviously the pitch of the roof comes down much faster than being a 412 pitch and spreads out. So the actual square footage that somebody in the north is going to view is going to be, as you look at the building, the view building is condensed.
Lot flatter.
And I looked at the top view and it seems like it kind of tucks in there and almost in a little horseshoe of the trees or in a north and south. Randy, do you have anything else you want to speak for the applicant on?
Not at this time, thank you.
On this part? Was there any other questions of the commission of Randy before we opened up for public comment? All right, I'll open up the podium now for public comment for, for anyone who wants to speak in opposition of the Kneifel variance. Seeing none, hearing none? And I'll open up the podium for those who want to speak in, uh, in favor of the Kneifel variance. Please come to the podium. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close public comments. Any questions of the commission of Pat in regards to the Kneifel variance?
How much, how much taxes are we going to get out of it?
I can't tell you that. I don't get to do that.
Oh, you don't? Just a, just a guess?
It's, yep. Yep. I, in fact, I, I don't think I have the, the estimate on his building permit yet. I have the building permit filled out, but I don't know what the cost is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Pat on the variance? Hearing none, I entertain a motion on the Kneifel variance.
Move the rule of the Kneifel variance.
Based on findings of facts?
Based on findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Kneifel conditional use permit for a swimming pool.
Okay. So planning commission recommended approval based on findings of fact to May 8th for a swimming pool in a low-density rural residential district in Yankton County. Said property is legally described as tract one, Kneifel's addition, southwest quarter, section seven, township 93, range 56. Here and now referred to as Utica South Township, county of Yankton, state of South Dakota. E-911 address is 31072, 434th Avenue, Yankton, South Dakota. As you can see on our sheet that we put there, very front there, your, your somewhat, your summary sheet, the swimming pool is greater than 30 inches in depth, require a conditional use permit. And so, um, Kelly had mentioned he's going to do this and then, um, and then, so this will be 16 feet by 36 feet. The depth will be greater than 30 inches. What we look for when we're, when we want to do conditional uses on these kinds of things are what? Safety, number one. That's what we're looking for. So if, that, that piece requires one of two things, doesn't require both, but it's either a safety cover that meets the UL standards, United Laboratory standards and is third-party registered, or a fence. And sometimes they do both. So Kelly had produced and has from, from the combined pool operation, which we will double-check and make sure everything's in place, safety cover that meets those UL or United Laboratory standards. Otherwise, he's done everything, he's done the application, he's done the notification and has a, the site plan showing where that pool will be on his property. And it's private use only. It's not part of the bed and breakfast, it's private use only.
He also mentioned that there'd be no diving board and it's six foot six, that's deepest.
Correct.
Do we have a restriction on no diving board?
No, but it's for safety, his, for his own safety. It's not deep enough for diving.
I think he also said it was for exclusively for family use.
Yes. And that's part of the findings, yes. Exclusively for family use.
Any questions for Pat?
Pat, are there any other requirements other than the 30-inch deep, uh, for a conditional use permit?
There is a requirement, let me see here, um, I don't have that one memorized. It is, if, if the pool is greater than 30 inches, that's what kicks it in and then there's a square footage requirement, I don't have it memorized, but it's...
One or, either or?
Either or.
Okay, so these little round pools that you see around it.
Generally don't meet the, they're generally just under 30 inches.
But if they're over 30 inches?
But the ones that you see that meet the 30 inches are the ones that have the wood frames with them, they're, they can be all above ground, but they're, they're great, they're almost 48 inches and those are the, when they kick in, yep.
But those have to have, uh, do we have a lot of the, I've never, I've never heard of another swimming pool coming in. I see, I see them sitting out in the country.
I've got some out in the country, I, and most of them are under that 30 inches. The, the one that, uh, coming out of the department stores and the large, big box doors is probably as big as this room in front of us and they're blue and they do look like they're blown up and they have a little air pump in them and looks like it even does the water treatment. We've measured those and those come in like a 28 inches.
Great.
Okay, so all of those, we don't do anything with. But we, I do have some out there we're probably going to have to address. I know one in particular, since my change finder, we have to go address that and, because it's greater than 30 inches. And it's also big, it's a big one.
And even the, the above-ground pools, they have some safety requirements, is that true?
Yes.
I mean, if, they don't have a cover, they got to have a fence?
Yes. We have to, we have to protect that piece. It has to have the safety features. Once it goes over that 30 inches, it kicks in. And there's a square footage, too. So either or. And it's, it's specifically, so I want to clarify this, too. Square footage, that doesn't mean that if it's a fish pond, that becomes a swimming pool and I want a condition, we want a conditional use for that. It has to be used for swimming. It's literally says in the definition, it is recreational swimming. So it doesn't muddy the water, saying that just a pond out in the backyard makes a pool. It's not, it has to be for swimming and exclusively.
Any other questions for Pat on the conditional use permit?
Ten more.
They're done from the commission, uh, I'd open up the podium again for the applicant if they want to speak on this.
Randy Johnson speaking on behalf of Kelly Kneifel. Again, the proposed pool is going to be located on the south end of his property, south of his house. Um, you can see, I think everybody had a map on it. Again, it's, it's, the square footage was there. There's going to be an ASTM certified, um, automatic cover on the pool. And that is both for, um, humans as well as, um, as well as animals. So they can literally walk on the pool cover and not fall in. I think the last thing that Kelly and Lisa want is to have to, have to try and lasso a deer out of that, out of that pool, let alone a grandchild. So safety's the main issue and again, you've been talking about the diving board, that's an issue, because that's usually a liability issue that goes along with, with diving boards. So it's going to be for their private use and we'll have an automatic pool cover on it. Not only for their protection and the children's protection, but obviously even the animals that are out in the country.
Any questions for Randy in regards to the applicant? Thank you, Randy.
Again, the pool will be installed professionally by, uh, combined pools in Spals, out of Sioux, out of Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
I'll open up this time for the public comment and anyone to speak in opposition to the conditional use permit for a pool for the Kneifels, uh, please approach podium. Seeing none? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the conditional use permit for the pool for the Kneifel, conditional use permit? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any further questions of the commission of Pat on regards to the conditional use permit? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Kelly Kneifel on the swimming pool.
Based on the findings of fact?
Based on the findings of fact.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now I need a motion to go into the ditch board.
You have to resign out of the...
No.
Second.
Thank you.
Did you get out of the board?
Patty said we just go right into the ditch board.
What about the, getting out of the Board of Adjustment?
Okay. Sorry.
So which one is it?
Get out of the Board of Adjustment then.
Then go into ditch board.
Make a motion...
So timeout, timeout? Ray made a motion already to go in the ditch board.
I'm just making...
He made a motion to go into the ditch board.
I rescind it for now.
I rescind it for now.
So what's the proper protocol, Rob?
I would pull out and then go back in, back to the ditch board.
So he made a motion to go on the ditch board, and we have a second.
Then I would redo a motion.
So we just have to leave the ditch board?
Do we rescind the ditch board to get out of the?
We rescind the motion?
I make a motion, rescind the motion to go, going into the ditch board.
I'll second that.
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to go out of Board of Adjust, Adjustments?
I'll make a motion to go out of the Board of Adjustments.
Gary, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, can I get a motion to go into the ditch board?
I'll try it again.
Okay, Ray made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're into the ditch board. That was smooth.
Oh, it's, it's what it is. Okay, guys. Guys. The restaurant's too much.
Guys yell.
I know, sorry, sorry. It drives me crazy. Okay, folks, here's what we got. This one is the volun extension. This one is. And this one is the volun lateral. And the ditch itself starts over here, starts here, and runs up along here, and then runs here until this is the bottom ditch, volun right here, until it goes in what we call the clay ditch, the big one.
Want to show that to the audience too, or?
The two, and then, so this is the, these are both volun lateral extension one, and then volun lateral. And we have individuals right now that want to do work on this piece right here. This request that's in front of you is to do work on this piece right here. And what they want to do, and you have it on your little sheets there too, and we can, what they want to do is they want to do culvert repair, which means that the culverts have a, if the ditches get full, the culverts have a cap on them, so it keeps it from going back into the field, but it can come out. Those, those caps are not working correctly. They want to remove some trees in the ditch. There are trees that are down in the ditch, they want to remove those, and then they want to try and clear high spots in the ditch. And then they want to check the culvert further down for the openings and close function. And then they, if they move along and they, this is a long-term plan, they want to remove the trees that are all on the ditch and remove an old bridge. And like I say, what they're talking about is actually in the volun ditch number one from four forty-eight until we come to four forty, to four fifty. They want to do that work in that ditch that long. Okay. Now, where's the money?
It's their money. I mean, they've, landowners support that.
Patty and I talked a little bit today, and this ditch, we think for back in the seventies, stopped collecting money.
The ditch where they're asking to work?
This ditch, which goes from here to here.
What's the, what's the road?
Has twenty-seven thousand dollars there.
So, let's go from what, what road to what road?
We think this one, we, this one goes from four forty-seventh over to four forty-eight.
They've been collecting money.
They're collecting money. They have twenty-seven thousand dollars in their account, correct? Something like that, twenty-seven something, some change.
But four forty-eight to four fifty, there's none.
And so, visiting with Patty a little bit, and I have to agree, there is no real good mechanism to just say, let's take money out of this lateral and stick it over here.
And you can't do that.
Yeah, can't do it. Okay, there is one that exists. So, what I'm seeing we have to do here as a ditch board is you need to say, they need to come in with an allocation. What do they want to do? They need to re-initiate this lateral.
So they have a ditch board?
Yes.
But they don't have any money in there? They're not collecting any taxes for the ditch board?
Right. And they want to start working on it. Now, they're just, these people haven't done, this isn't ignorance or anything, they just, everybody's learning how this works, but this doesn't have any money in it. They need to re-initiate. All these citizens in the red would begin, start paying into this if they re-initiated for twenty nineteen.
Patty, do you know if they've ever collected any money and they just stopped, or is there any record of that?
It's been years, and you, because I've been with the county for thirty-two years and never, unless years ago.
So, what I, what I look for you, from you, is a motion to say, there's no funding in here, and that the ditch, the lateral, volun lateral ditch number one needs to come back in front of the board with a levy request.
Pat, you said between four forty-eight and four fifty.
Mm-hmm.
It's four fifty where it dumps into another la, is that the end of?
The lateral number one.
Well, is that the end of the drainage, or are they stopping in midstream? Are you familiar enough, if, where they want to stop, is that actually a, a drainage into another ditch?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
And we talked about that. Because originally, they came in and just wanted to do a couple things in here, and I said, you gotta make the water.
You gotta start at the end and come forward.
And this ditch is letting, there's money coming in on this one.
Yes.
Wow.
But this one isn't. This piece right now is, and these are just learn-as-we-go. We, if you remember, we did it with Turkey Valley. It was the same process, and then we said, okay, you guys gotta come back and request this. I didn't, I, a couple of these people told me they were being levied, including Lanny, and Patty went and worked today, and they are not.
So how quickly could they get money, Patty, I mean, to take care of this problem? Because some of these issues sounded like they were?
Back to next year.
Wow. Because there's?
They could, they can do different things. They can come in and say, okay, we'll do it, and then come back and get paid later. That's a little bit, that is what, what happened up at Turkey Valley. They did start earlier, but they initiated the levy first.
Does it have to go to a vote out there? Ditch board can just activate the levy?
You as a, you as a ditch board?
I mean?
They'd be considered ditch committee, and they're asking the ditch board to apply the levy. But they have to ask for it.
All right.
It's not, you have to do it by request from the citizens. When they first came forth with this, we thought twenty-seven, that was giving a whole kitty, but it's not. It's all over here on this piece.
Those are two different drainage districts?
We have, we got like, we got a lot of mapping upstairs now, but we've got something like nine of these, in which about half of them are not active.
And some have money, and have, probably has money from years ago, that they never stopped, they didn't need to do anything, so they just stopped levying for it?
Okay, Patty, the twenty-seven thousand dollars, where's that? Where is that twenty-seven? Yeah, I know. Where's the money?
We, it's in, in, for, we keep it, we don't send it alike, we do our normal, like the schools and cities, we keep the money, and then whenever they need the money for their?
So is it in our general fund?
No.
It's a, is it a?
It's called a trust and agency fund. It's designated.
For that particular ditch?
It's designated for others. It's not in the general?
If somebody were to pull that, that trust enabling, is that what you say, trust enabling fund?
No, trusted agency fund.
Agents, trust and agency fund. If I sat down to look at it today, would I be able to see what's in each one of these, you said nine ditch districts?
Yes.
As a specific amount in each one?
Yes.
Okay.
Which would be helpful too. That's the next thing we should do.
There shouldn't be any question then, about whether they got any money or not.
I know. And Patty can produce those for me, and that has, has all the people that, all the properties, and then is there money in there or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That's good.
So there's no money in that drainage district?
In this ditch.
In that ditch.
Volun lateral ditch number one.
Well, if, if they quit paying on it since nineteen seventy, apparently they have no interest in it.
And now they do.
Now they do.
But now they're learning, but a lot of those people are kids, and they stopped paying, and they don't know how, they're learning how this works too.
So?
Yes.
So your recommendation is what again, Pat?
Considering what I've learned, and that all the money's over there, my recommendation is, is that you, and you can make a motion that says, there is no money in this lateral ditch number one, and that the levy participants need to come forth with a request to reinstate the levy, to put money in that ditch.
And you need to be the one contacting those individuals?
Then I'll be the contact.
Any other questions for Pat in regards to this? Jay, hold on a second, any from the commission quick, and then? All right, Jay, it's all yours. Jay cuts, Mission Hill. Since this was shut off, can they come in as a committee and, and request a levy of whatever they think they need? I mean, nor does it have to go back to what it was when they shut it off?
No. They can, up to a hundred percent of what the original levy was. They can go to a hundred percent of that.
Of the original assessment.
They were collecting twenty-some, the original assessment. And what was it? They were collecting twenty-some percent of that.
Twenty-seven percent of the original assessment.
So they could come back in and say, we want a hundred percent of the original assessment.
Okay, I didn't know if they, if they could come in and say, okay, we need like a dollar a thousand or something like that, like if you, when you start up something else?
They, no.
Okay, they'd have to go back to the original assessment. Okay.
So make sure we, what Jay is saying then is that how fast can they build this up? And they were running twenty-seven percent of the original levy, they can go to a hundred. That's what Turkey Valley did, and they built the funds up much quicker, of the original levy. But they can't exceed it unless they create a new ditch. So, that, what we would, but that would be their decision, how fast they want to build that up.
Any other questions for Pat?
This gentleman had a question.
No.
Laila, any of you guys?
If there's no other questions for Pat, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, since there is no money in volun lateral ditch number one, that the landowners abutting that ditch come back to the commission and present us with the le, the desired levy to fund their repairs.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
There's a second? Any discussion by the commissioners? I just have one comment. Pat, you said we should do a roll call vote on this?
If we were gonna, if we were gonna levy it, if you're gonna do the levy, but otherwise, you're spending money on it, so otherwise, no.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
Move we go back into regular session.
Second.
Done. Gary, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Into regular session. Patty, you talked about Change Finder. Next item on the agenda is the Fire and Ice Malt Beverage License Renewal.
No. Change Finder.
I talked about the poster. Talked about the poster.
Well, they're two different things in that one line on.
Yeah.
All right. I misunderstood. Change Finder.
Okay. So, Change Finder, and Gary, just for your information, because the other four were here when we, but when we do, when we do these aerials, and we did them three years ago, or, we did them three years ago, and now we did them a ye, a year ago. And so each time we do that, there's a, the computer will allow you to look at the pictures and see if anything's different over that three-year period. And then many times, it's building permits, and sheds, and additions, and sometimes even a house. We finally put it together after getting everything done, we've gone through all of that, we, we've put everything together throughout the county. I have a hundred and thirty-three violations.
By violation, you mean something that existed?
Something that there's a?
That didn't exist three years ago, but exists now, and doesn't have a building permit?
Yes. Yes.
Hundred and thirty-three?
Hundred and thirty-three of them, throughout the county.
Well, we found out in Board of Equalization that there was a house that was built out in the country that had no building permit.
Yep.
Two hundred and fifty thousand of those, huh?
Didn't pay taxes for how many years?
Who knows? Yes. And, and of that, it's funny, because that's one of them, there was a hundred and thirty-eight when we finished this, and then there's been, there was two, two the day before, there was the house, and now it's down to a hundred and thirty-three.
How long have we had zoning, Pat?
Since two thousand and three. So, there's very few things, at least in a phone call, should at least have a phone call to say, do I need a building permit or not? I presented this letter to you that we would like to send to the people that we do need to get the building permit from. There's two different ways we can go about doing this. Three, four years ago, when we did this, we, we did a thing where we said, if you get ahold of us within thirty days, we will forgive any fines. And tried to get people used to our process and what we're doing, and that this Change Finder is there, and, and we did that. And we spent the summer, and we educated people, and we told them how this works, and that, but we didn't find them as, as it states we should do in the zoning ordinance. So, it seems, there's two different statements we can put on here. One is, is please contact the office to address compliance within thirty days of receiving this notice, and Yankton County will waive all late fees for failure to obtain a building permit. We did that four years ago. Or, no statement, and just impose it's a hundred dollar fine for opposed construction building permit.
And fines a hundred dollars?
That's in the ordinance.
Is that just one hundred dollars per?
Per violation.
And you said this is, we did this already? We've already sent this letter once?
We did this three years, four years ago.
We didn't send this?
To these same people?
Two.
This was done to prior violators?
Yep.
These are not the same violators, or maybe they're a couple that maybe crossover?
Yep.
So, so Pat, I was in that hundred and thirty-three, and had no idea that I was in there until I got the letter. And it was a small thing, so I, you know, I'm not saying my luggage is real clean, but it is now. But, you know, I can see the first time you can give them an out like this, but the second time, or the third time, it should be a hell of a lot higher than this.
See, and we don't have that authority, but I think, I feel very strongly that?
Well, I don't have it.
What has to change?
It's, we'd have to change the ordinance, because the ordinance stipulates that it's a hundred dollars, that it's in the ordinance, one hundred dollars, that's the fine for opposed construction building permit.
You take this house, this new house that was built out there, that we think three or four years, I mean, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a million dollars of valuation over four years.
Yep.
They would not get by with a hundred dollar fine.
I, I agree. I do agree with that.
Or be, or be, absolutely have to pay back taxes or something, something.
Well, I'd say back taxes double.
Yeah.
So, you know, the technology is giving us some new tools, so we can work on these things, and get these things, and catch them when we should catch them, and do what we're supposed to do. But I recommend that we do the fine. We were, we were, we were, it was publicized, it was publicized several times in the paper, publicized, it was publicized several times in the paper, what we were doing four years ago. Many people talked to me about it. It isn't like they don't know we're zoning, and we're out, we know what's going on.
I mean, as soon as you cross into Yankton County on a rural road, it says, "Yankton County is zoned."
Yes.
So it's not like...
Yeah, but some people think building an outhouse on their farm is...
Some of that's forgivable. We've got an awful lot. Here's a 22 by 26. Here's an addition on a house. Here's an addition on a house which is, which is a three-car garage.
I know there are additions that are, which pay a higher property taxes, because they've expanded their footprint of their home.
Yes. Yes, over and over again. I have a few decks, but I, most of them that I'm looking at here that we want, that we said need to have the attention are, are, are additions, and entirely new buildings.
Accessory structures, some...
Accessory structures, many of them.
I think we're talking about protecting, if we're, if we're talking about protecting the taxpayer that's honest and doing correctly, given one mistake that they can have, we should have far, far more stringent...
Especially with the examples that you just pulled out. I mean, it is real. It is real dollars. When you take a house like that and don't get it reported for two years, two and a half years, it's not fair to the other people.
Well, we spent, we just paid $30,000 to, to get another year's service of, you know, checking on, on these issues.
Mm-hmm.
So, we spent money to stop it.
Yep.
Now, why aren't we doing something once we identify it?
Yep.
That's meaningful.
It will get pushback, I guarantee you. But that's okay. That's life. That's what it is. That's my job. But, but I do believe that, I feel strongly that it gets their attention. They'll pay attention. We're, we're serious, and it helps with what you're saying. We are losing revenues.
Well, I guess, is there any, could we, could we table this and work on it, and then come back a month from now?
You want, you want a higher fine in a month from now, or what are you talking about?
I don't want to send out a letter that says $100 fine.
The only way we can do that, we'd have to change the ordinance...
Change the zoning ordinance, and you know how long...
And that takes two readings, and then...
It won't happen.
Because this, these violations are found now under the ordinance as they stand, right? Rob, we, so if we change the fine to $200, from that day forward, that's when those people get a $200 fine. These violators have been found now, so this is what we have to apply to. I don't disagree with you. A hundred bucks, and we have a $250,000 home...
Hundred dollars a day past 30 days, every day. That would get your attention.
That's at a different time and place, but...
That would get your attention.
If you, you have to understand that the ordinance said, and has it laid in there, $100 is what the ordinance says. It won't allow us to go over that until we change the ordinance.
So what you're asking for today, Pat, is to send this letter out, and you want direction either to use Statement A or Statement B. Statement B is no statement, and just impose a $100 fine?
It's right on the building permit. It's a $100 fine.
So would that say all structures with no building permit must be compliant with the zoning regulation of Yankton County within 30 days, or pay a $100 fine?
Um, no. It's gonna say that within 30 days, and that first sentence gets disappeared, the both go away if we do the $100 fine. They won't have a statement there. I'll just end it at saying...
Oh, I see.
You need to get to me in 30 days.
How much delay, I mean, how long does it take to get $100 worth of late fees?
You know that. I mean, it doesn't. The $100 is, it's in the book, it's there. The biggest issue I'm seeing is, is that we've got an awful lot of violators. I think we could shoot, I think in three years from now, if we did the $100 fine, we're gonna have less than 133 in three years from now. Because we don't seem to be getting their attention, because we had about 150 the first time. So we're still getting an awful lot of violators.
You missed my point.
Okay.
Or I missed, I'm not understanding this. It says, "We will waive the late fees for failure to obtain a building permit." How long does it take to get $100 worth of late fees? That's my question.
The late fee is if you come in after you built the structure, post-construction, period. Okay?
Okay.
That's when it's period. It doesn't take anything. So, so we're literally giving them even another 30 days to, and then not find it in that 30-day period.
So if I'm sitting there thinking, "I'm gonna screw the county," do I need to know the time it takes to build up those late fees, above $100?
It would be from the time that, my opinion is, is that it would be the date on the letter is when the 30 days kicked in for your window to get into the office to not pay. Is that what you're asking?
No, I think we're done. I'm done.
Okay.
Your letter here, that's the example in front of us, the second paragraph, they're all, you would not, the last sentence would be gone, and you'd just say, "You owe a fine of $100, and you need a building permit, post-permit."
Yep.
There is no 30 days. There is no, you violated this county ordinance, so you owe a $100 fine, you need to get in for a building permit.
Yes.
You need, you just looking for a recommendation, or you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a recommendation.
What's the recommendation of the board?
I would agree with the imposing the fine. I think that's a, that's a minimal issue, and ask them to, direct them to come in and get a building permit.
Ray, do you have an opinion?
Given we had zoning since 2003, I say fine them.
I can live with it.
Gary? Fine them or no fine them? You're in law enforcement when you got someone arrested for speeding.
What's that?
In law enforcement, somebody got a speeding ticket.
Yeah, you have to pay it.
I'm, I'm in favor of the fine.
Okay.
So I think you have permission from the board to send a letter with the fine. Am I, is that the consensus?
Yep.
That's what's in the ordinance, too.
That's in the ordinance. Okay.
All right.
There they all are, so this is gonna start here next week, and so to see, the letters will start dropping, so, anyway.
Can it be put in the paper?
It has been.
No, I mean the names.
Oh.
Oh.
The names of the people? I got them all.
No, can it be put in the paper, like when you're laboring your taxes, or when you get a fine, or this, that?
Just, just a notice as the violators?
Yeah, a list of people that didn't get...
Building permits.
Rob?
It's up to the commission. It's public record.
There's two ways we can do that. It's interesting. I don't know, you could put, every, every month, we have our building permit report. We can put a note in there that states that this was late, or, or the $100 was, was applied to it.
I think you should put it in with that, since we're already gonna be publishing it.
Yep. Every month, we publish it.
Put the names in.
Yep.
And just put a note on there.
Yep. That $100 fine is what, at the end of it. There's this, this, here's the estimate, and then we can put the $100 fine on there.
Okay.
And an asterisk that says they didn't file for building permit.
Can do that. And that's, we already do the system, so it would just be one extra step.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the Fire and Ice malt beverage license. Is the applicant on the, is Luke McAllister?
Cam, I did talk to Cam McAllister, and they requested this can be moved for two
Well, we delayed it last time to talk at this one. We put that, they were in the meeting at that time. I don't see why we need to move it.
And they request Luke was not at the last meeting, his dad was, and it is going through his son Luke. It is, he is not here. Luke is out of town.
But you said Cam made the request to you to move the meeting?
Yep.
And Cam was...
Cam made the request.
But Cam was at the last meeting.
It's up to the board.
Well, don't we, don't we have a time limit on that?
End of June is when it expires.
So our next meeting...
Is June 19th.
June 19th.
Nineteenth. If there's any kind of a question on it, or compliance at all, just to wait that for.
Well, his perm liquor, like beer permit here expires, expires on June 30th of this year. This will go from June, July 1 of 2018 through 19.
Yep.
So, so if we act on this, and whatever the decision Cam's been, if it's, we decide not to approve it, he can apply for another permit, can he? July 1?
No, I think there's a delay. I don't know if it's three months or a year, and anybody knows the time, but there is, there is a time when you can't make an application. It's quickly denied. There's a period of time.
Well, in my opinion, this is something that's been on the agenda. Cam McAllister was at the previous meeting. We told, we said at that meeting, we'll have it at this meeting. We're two days later than normal, of our normal meeting.
Wasn't that for his request?
It would give him a fair hearing at that point in time.
Pat, have you had any contact with these people since the last meeting?
No.
Pat?
Oh, Pat, I thought you said...
Have you had any contact with the McAllisters regarding this application since the last meeting?
They, he called me at 3 o'clock this afternoon, and it was Cam, not Luke. And Cam says he talked about what would be needed at, on that property, as far as a site plan. I haven't seen anything. Nothing's been produced. And it was at 3 this afternoon.
I see that he's banded up the wood and filed it in a different location. Is there something significant about that?
That got moved off of that, because it was on, that property got sold. It was a five acre, and it got sold, and so it was on the neighbor's property now, so they made him pick it up and put it over there.
So he didn't do that?
No.
He did dump a pile of dirt in the vicinity of his sign. It looks like maybe he's going to try and fill that area underneath the sign with dirt to plant something, but nothing's been done. It's just a pile of dirt.
How about, if you, both, both Don and Deb, you could appreciate this. What happens when they come to the county, when they come to the planning commission meeting and they don't come? We don't hear the case, do we?
They don't do the action.
Sometimes it's tabled, sometimes it's extended. I don't know. My opinion on this thing, from my standpoint, is, is that, and Rob can, can interject, but mine is, is that seems we've given them an awful lot of time. Why didn't we get a call back? If this was a, if this was something that was emergency, that, but from what I'm understanding, it's not, and why are we continuing to hear this case? And I still have not gotten a single thing from them in my office regarding any what we're requesting.
Do we have any exposure if it were turned down?
Do you have to state with particularity on the application of why you're denying? If that's what you have.
Wasn't here to present it?
Well, how does it, whatever, other reasons?
Is there a requirement that it give you a site plan, or is it a site plan because this is a new application, or?
There's a requirement in there that I get site plans. Yes, I have them. And on Article 15, it says that when we get into extra or more intense development areas, that we can get a site plan regarding the septic system before they're installed.
And the reason that we are asking for the site plan is because he's wanting it on and off sale, and therefore, the requirement is to have some sort of toilet facility, and that's gonna require a septic system in that area. Is that correct?
Yes, which requires a site plan to understand what we're doing, and then the, there's several zoning, but 15, Article 15 fits that one. And we, we've been working with this, with this, this operation since May, or probably April of 2017. We don't get anywhere. It's always this kind of, of activity with them, with this operation. It's, this is exactly what happens each and every time, so...
Well, first off, if they want on sale for this property, they have no bathrooms.
Correct.
And porta-potties, in my opinion, are not sufficient.
They're not even allowed, they're not even allowed in that district.
So his previous liquor license was just off sale?
No, it was on and off. This is a renewal, right?
It says it's new.
And remember, the licenses got shipped here in the last few years, because it used to be an on, and it used to be an off, but now they're all on and off because of the video lottery. So there isn't, there is not a difference anymore. You get one license, plus the farm license is underneath that. The farm wine license is also included.
So is this a new license firm, or a re...
A renewal.
Because it's listed as a new license on the application.
I'm sure they had one last year. I hope so.
Yes, they did.
They did, and they had it on and off sale last year.
Okay.
Unless they, uh, wine.
Yep.
They had it in a wine. That's why it's new.
Okay.
Okay.
But there's no reason that they couldn't be operating right now with the valid license that they had till the 30th of June, except for their own choice. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Did he give any reason why he couldn't be here today?
So he was out of town at a wireless convention.
I think we act on this. We've given plenty of notice. That's my opinion.
You know, the only persons we're hurting by extending this two weeks is the applicant. I mean, if there's something to come up at that meeting, he's not gonna have any time to respond, so I don't have a problem with looking at this in two weeks.
Any other thoughts?
I say we act on it.
Don or Gary, your idea, your thoughts?
Let's act on it.
Excuse me?
He said, he said act on it. Don?
Yeah, I'd go for acting on it.
So, in regards to the McAllister permit, Fire and Ice, since, in my opinion, since there's no outside bathrooms, I don't see any reason to approve any on-sale liquor license. Any other reasons not to approve, or to approve, this license? There are no other comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I make the motion, we deny malt liquor beverage license renewal for Fire and Ice on grounds of non-compliance with ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Mayfield Township, Kevin Huber.
Kevin Huber, Mayfield Township, here to talk about replacing a culvert one mile off of 46, and one mile south, north of 46, and one mile west of 81 on that intersection. It, it has always been taken care of by the county before, and now, I guess they say it's ours, because it's less than 20 feet. It actually, the plank that lay on there are 16 feet, and if I read the law right, the definition of a bridge is a structure including supports erected over depression or obstruction as water, highway rail, having a length along the center of more than 20 feet. So, we're dealing probably with the cement and the plank of about 18 feet. So by definition, it is not a bridge. It's a culvert. It sits at a bad intersection. Ray was out and seen it.
Would you give that intersection again, please, Kevin? You said a mile, mile north of 46?
One north of 46 and one east of...
81.
81.
Okay.
The, what had happened, that this thing sits close to the, to the corner, and semis can't make it very well, and a semi drove over the railing and flattened it.
Do you know that, you don't happen to know who the driver was? Is that all about the company?
They didn't stop.
They didn't leave, they didn't leave their insurance card?
Didn't leave their car card.
So...
Kind of good neighbors for those.
When that happened, it shifted the plank, and now we've got travel going down into the creek. I mean, it, the, the thing is shot. It's, it's, um, it's, is it 20 feet wide now, or 18 feet wide?
I think it's 20.
It wasn't, it was 16 feet wide years ago, and then the county cut some railings out there and made it 20 feet wide, you know, to make it a little more modern. But, anyway, it needs to be replaced. We have, on either side of that bridge, we have, well, Bob Lucas has a bend site just real close there. The C's has 200,000 bushels of grain a mile away from there. The, Kevin Healy lives on that road. It's, it's a, there's several people go to town, work in town and use that road. It's a highly traveled road. Its location, it's right along the corridor. We cannot put culverts or whatnot in because of where it's located, so we have to put in a cement box culvert, because there's just no, we're gonna, we wanna raise the road up so that there's not this bump there anymore. We, the farm, we want things done right, and... And, uh, to replace it with what we want, with what it needs, the structure and putting it in will cost roughly around $65,000, which is what our township typically spends in a whole year. We realize that the county is restricted on funds. We're not asking the county to pay for the whole thing. We would like if the county would, uh, pay for the culvert, which is about $35,000, and we would install it and we would do the roadwork. We are getting a little help from Jim River for some riffraff stuff. It, in the eighties, they were going to, the county wanted to change the whole flow of things and they were trying to work with the landowners, but it didn't go through. The county is always, the county's got another structure on the road just to the, to the west there. Is there anything else you can think of, Bob?
Well, just the, the people violating the port of entry.
Yeah, the port, we, we get a lot of extra traffic too because these trucks that see port open, well, they take that first mile off and they go around the port. So I mean, it, it's just things like that that happen too. And I'm sure that's probably what happened with the railing getting run over. Because the corner cannot be manipulated with a full-length trailer. But if we do what we want to do, the road will be wide, we'll be able to pass with equipment, the corner will be better. And it's not changing the size, so we don't need to do any determination that the opening will stay the same. But I guess, like I said, our, our request is if we could get some from the county to help.
I reached out to Greg Gavira. I know you've met Greg when we were doing the organized, unorganized township, just to see if the state had a program in regards to some sort of grant like we got with the big grant. He said they had tried to get some into legislation because of all the culverts that are out there. And then Ray's talked about this at length. Never got, I don't know if it got even out of committee to help fund some of these culverts because you're not alone. County's not alone. I mean, it's, so they're trying to do that again maybe next year as well to help find another funding source to, where the state would, the state would be able to kick in on some of these projects.
I'll give them back to you. Is it unsafe right now for traffic?
We're keeping it an eye on it. It ain't, it isn't pretty. I mean.
And there's a snapper about this dig underneath the bridge. So if you don't fall through, he might get you.
Was there one under there?
Holy hell.
And like I say, the county had always, and Leland is our historian for Mayfield Township. He's been on there for how long? And the county had always taken care of this, um, till recently.
Questions or comments for Kevin?
What's that?
I was just seeing if anybody had questions or comments for you.
You said that the structure to the west of the intersection, Kevin, that's over 20, that is a county bridge there?
No, that, well, the county put it in in, in what, 80, mid 80s? But that one's not 20 feet either.
So that is township responsible, Teal's?
No.
Yeah.
It's right near the intersection, correct?
Right, that's why, that's why I got, and when we get, when we put in what we want to put in, it'll be a, a better corner.
Have you guys done, you know, I know Utica came to us last year with the same type of request. They had actually done an opt-out. Have you guys done any opt-outs at all for?
We've been opting out.
You are?
Yeah.
And that's the $10,000 opt-out you have right now?
I believe so.
Other questions for Kevin from the commission?
What's the urgency of this?
Urgent? I mean, we've, we've ordered, we're, we're putting it in. We've ordered it. It's got to be put in. I mean, we got, there's too many farmers there. There, it, there's just too much activity. And then we got the port with these people that are.
Well, that'd be one way you could stop them from avoiding the port, is not to replace the bridge, right?
It, 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 it.
It's a main road.
And we are, and, and it has to be put in.
You say west of 81 or east of 81?
West.
West.
East, excuse me, east.
From the commission, is there any other questions for Kevin? I know there's someone in the audience who has a question. Is there any other questions from the commission? Dan, let him approach, please.
Hello, everybody. Dan Clemish, Director of the James River Water Development District, also the chairman. We went out and looked at this project. I think it's a good project. I had my board support this with $10,000 for the riffraff. It, it needs to be replaced. While I was there, there's a lot of traffic, like you said, a lot of agricultural traffic. A lot of trucks go up and down in that road hauling their grain. And, and there is a lot of traffic from the port of entry that goes around that area. So I'm just here to offer, say, I think it's a good project and urge you guys to support it. The townships don't have a lot of money to do that. That's why we saw fit to contribute some toward the riffraff. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Brian has seen it too. If you have any questions for Brian about it.
Brian, you want to just kind of give us your opinion on the bridge and thoughts?
Well, I have a few things. Uh, I know I've talked with, with Ray and Todd. We just kind of scratched the surface there. But, uh, the bridge, well, the culvert, uh, by rights is, yeah, it's in poor shape. But like I was mentioning to Ray, when we, when we did our culvert inventory, we're one of the highest in the state as far as these structures below 20 feet and above 16 square feet in opening. We have 413. I don't foresee this being the first request coming to us. And, and definitely not the last. I mean, it's, it's going to continue to come. These structures are pushing on 100 years old. I don't know where I could find it in my budget this year. But in future years, I think we need to look at putting a line item in my budget to, to look at these culverts on a case-by-case basis. I know I met with Brian Olson from Holloway Construction and I know Kevin and the township board met with them also. And, and I've been using him to kind of guide me along and much like they did because each of these are different scenarios. Yes, this one is a very unique scenario on the fact that it's right on the corner. And where there's other scenarios where you could get by with cheaper options and still maintain the flow of the, of the land. That's why I believe that each, each one of these needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis and acted on consistently. Uh, like Ray and I had talked, uh, I think we need to look at putting a line item in my budget and having a criteria set as far as, you know, what steps township needs to take to get to the point of request. And kind of have a dollar amount set on what we could help them out with. I mean, I, just on my roads that were required by state statute to maintain, I mean, we're looking at half those culverts. And, and the unorganized territories. That gets a little more wicked when you get on the west side of the county as far as these structures that are below the, the 20-foot threshold and above the 16-square feet in opening. Like I said, I don't know where I could find it in my budget this year. But as far as in future years, I think we need to plan for it because the need is there. It's just the fact of having the, the talk and the, and the communications between the township and, and the county boards to have a consistent understanding of what, what can happen.
I know you understand this, uh, because I'm going to say it anyway. It's, it comes down to income.
Yes.
The math on this is horrible. You said 400?
413.
13. Yeah. If you did half of them in the next 20 years, what is that amount?
Well, but at least.
If you did half of them, it'd be 200 times 30,000, it'd be $60 million.
Right. I know we don't have that type of budget.
We don't have $60 million and you can budget it on a, on a annual basis or a monthly basis. But the issue, I mean, everybody, nobody wants to pay more taxes. Everybody wants things done.
But I look at these critical routes in townships too.
I understand.
Are we going to push all the farm traffic onto 46? And, I mean, I, I look at that, safety aspects that way.
And that is what Brian just said too. We have, we have a lot of farmers that means it's that close to the state highways take these roads because no one wants these tractors on Highway 1 or 46 either. Everything, like I said, this one's got a lot of problems.
You know.
Was it Utica or Western Road that came in last year?
It was Utica that came in. Bob Chop came in and talked to us. You know, I, after that meeting a year ago, I know you were there, Kev, because we were talking about organized and unorganized townships at that time. You know, I, I understand the township's position. They're, they're in the same position we are. We're both, we're both strapped for cash on roads and we all have more projects that we haven't checked with before. But one of the things I started thinking about after that meeting was, is there a way we can do a line item or do a set aside, you know, a certain amount and kind of do an informal grant system for the townships? And I kind of reached out to the state. I don't know if it was the auditor or, or was it Rod Fortin? Just kind of talking about what could we do? I even thought about maybe putting in some sort of a procedure or some resolution. Unfortunately, there wasn't, nothing legally we could do as a resolution. But I think if we would put something together in future budgets, maybe do something like a 50,000 line item and then give a, or whatever numbers is, is what's up or would be up for discussion. But have, let the townships kind of apply for us for a grant, so to speak. Maximize that at a certain dollar figure. And each township would have one shot at the apple per year. Because I, I see the need for this, but I also look at all the items we have on the road budget, or the items that need to be done. We take 35,000, where are we taking it away from? So, um, I think we're all in that rock and hard place with projects and the lack of funding. But I, um, I think with this situation, and I think I'd be able to support something. I don't, I don't know what that number is. I'd leave that up to the board to discuss, but.
Remind me of what we did with Utica?
We rejected it.
You, you do know the statute 311427, how that reads, right?
Why don't you read it to us because I don't have that one in my eyes?
County, I better put my readers on. "County construction or replacement of bridges and culverts on township secondary roads. Reimbursement of county. If a township board of supervisors or county highway superintendent within the state requests of its board of county commissioners a construction replacement in its entirety of any bridge or the placing and replacing of any culvert with an opening of 16 square feet or more, including materials, upon secondary road within such township, the board of county commissioners may cause the same to be done and the township shall reimburse the county up to, including, $500. And any costs in excess of the $500 shall be paid by the county. After the placing or replacing of the culvert as provided in this section, it shall be maintained and kept clean at the expense of the township. The construction or replacement of any bridge or placing or replacing of any culvert with an opening of less than 16 square feet upon secondary roads within a township shall be the total expense of the township and shall be maintained and kept clean at the expense of the township." Now, the, the word here that helps the counties get out is the word "may". But it was placed in here for a reason. The, the reason the lawmakers had put this law in here was to, when you've got so excessive flow of a certain amount, it becomes more than a township problem, it becomes a county problem. But anyway, I realize this law does not force the county to pay for anything, but it does suggest that there is a little bit of responsibility to the county for openings of certain sizes.
So what's the opening of yours right now?
Um, well, it's 16 feet across and five feet about deep, so about 80 square feet. Or wait, five, 32, 64, yeah.
And 18 feet long?
16 feet wide.
It's 16 feet wide and five feet deep.
The other two feet is the embutment on the side of each. Any other questions or comments from Kevin? For Kevin, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, is this something that, we have budget hearings coming up. Is this something that we could address?
Not for this year.
For this year? I mean, for the, the one, the new one we were discussing?
For 2019, yes, yes.
That's what I meant.
So if there was a motion for money on this, we would have to specify where that money comes from? Would we not?
You say that again?
So if there's a motion today from us to, to supplement something on this project, it has to specify where that money would come from.
I was here the day when a million dollars got spent on the East City Limits Road and I asked that question. And I was told that you did not have to tell me where the money was coming from in the budget.
There was a motion on that to have it come out of the Fleek's Bridge.
Not that day. Because I asked where the money was going to come from.
And that's where it came from.
And, yeah, but that day, but that day it was not said where it was coming from.
But there's, there has to be a motion in the, since it's not budgeted, there has to be a motion on where that money comes from at some point in time to justify the movement of that money. And that's what happened.
That's what I asked that day, that million dollars are spent. I said, didn't have to be, but anyway, don't matter, but.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? I would open the floor up for a motion.
I, I want to clarify one thing here. You're, you're in, in the process of doing it now, right?
We have ordered it.
Okay. So if we were to say, yeah, we can support it at $10,000 or $20,000 level or whatever and payable in 2019?
There's a good chance it won't get done until 19 anyway.
Okay.
So this won't be done this year?
Hopefully November and September.
But we, they, they, they got to make, they had to make this. And it's in order.
Does that answer your question, Don? I open up the floor for a motion?
You said if we make a motion today, it has to be designated where it comes from?
We're just going to have to say at some point in time where this money comes from because this is not a budgeted item.
You just got a motion out if you agree to give them money.
And then we'll have to supplement the budget at a, at a future meeting, the amount.
Remembering that there'll be 100 more requests after this one's approved. Or 150.
They can't enforce that to bypass a little bit more. A lot of those out of state trucks are killing.
Even, even, I mean, that is a problem. But the fact that it's off the state highway, that the farm machinery that runs it to stay off the, it just, it's a, and its location, there was a cheaper way to fix it. We'd be doing it that way, but there just isn't a cheaper way because there ain't enough dirt level to put over the culverts, there's not room for culverts, it's just in a bad location.
Because my, my aunt home's at 400 acres right there. Because my aunt owns that 400 acres right there, and she discusses it every time she goes out there. They lived there for decades.
I understand the big equipment. You know, there's 20,000 people in town and county, and, you know, everybody has wants and demands. I would make a motion that we table the request until we've had time to review setting up guidelines and budget line item to cover such instances as this, and then provide them with an answer on the 2019 budget.
The motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second that.
The motion, we have a second discussion.
I think we can't approve it until we sit down and look at our budgeting process. But I agree with Todd, we've got to do some things, and on major items, we've got to identify, you know, ultimately, some of these roads are going to have to be closed. We can't repair them all, but this appears to be a very important intersection. And, you know, the state's really good at pushing things down on the county, and the county's really good at pushing things down on the townships, and I'd kind of like to be in a position where we can all work together.
Well, I agree that these are vital roads for the people that live out there, and whether it's emergency vehicles, whether it's farm vehicles, or whether it's just, you know, farm-to-town roads. I caution us by opening up Pandora's Box with somebody that wants us to help with 431 culverts, but I think we should weigh each one on the merits of the particular case when it comes to us. So, I agree with you, we can't spend money that we haven't put in the budget already. So, I would concur with you.
It's going to have to be a percentage factor. You know, the county has 413, and so there's seven unorganized townships in the county. That's about 59 structures per unorganized township. And if I remember right, our culvert map for Volin Township, if I remember right, we got 62. So, that, those numbers are pretty stinking close as to what... So, on the town, not all structures are going to be this expensive. Some are just going to be a pipe. We put in two pipes last year in our township, so it, but we do have, that cotton picking, one just west of my place is a headache. But, so there's, all organized townships are going to have this same style of structures in them that are under the 20-foot recommendations, just like this one. And so, when we come, when they are brought before the commission, it needs to be on a percentage basis of what we can put in, because they're out there.
You know, Mr. Chairman, maybe there could be something like, when we apply for the big grants. I mean, there's a lot of people applying for them. Everybody can get a little bit of it.
Well, that's, I think with the motion, now, is a table to figure out a procedure. I think let's focus on that part of it. My only question in regards to the motion to table it, I don't want this to be tabled without a deadline. I would like to have, we're talking about budgets on Monday.
Right.
I would like to have this talked about at the July meeting, at one of the July meetings, to have a, some sort of answer to your township by that time. Is that, is that something we can amend into the motion to have a deadline in July? The second meeting in July?
They're aggressing.
When do we have to have our preliminary budget done?
It's not till later in the fall. I mean, September...
When's our first one have to be, the preliminary?
In August.
August 1.
So, we should have a good idea by the second meeting in July of what our preliminary budget should look like.
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay. That way, you guys have at least some sort of timeframe.
So, what is it you're going to do?
So, the motion and the second on the table is to table this until we go through the budget process, which is in the next couple. We're doing it, starting Monday, and we'll have a second one later after that. We'll have an answer for you by July is what the motion, end of July is what the motion is.
It wasn't only the budget, Todd. I think if my motion said, and develop...
A procedure.
A procedure that says, this is how much money, and I'm thinking, I always think of the jail, the income from the jail as a possible source. This much money comes out of the jail, goes to the townships, and here's the process that you have to go to apply for.
Will that be for the $35,000 that he's requesting?
No.
No.
Right now, the motion on the table is just to table it and put a process in place and have an answer. We don't have a date on the motion unless you want to amend it to the July.
I'd amend it to the second meeting in July.
Okay. You still second that then, Ray? Any other discussion on this?
Do you, do you want any information on the cost of the project for your stuff or not?
Yes, but let's finish this motion first. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Yes, we'll take that information on that.
Can we get those pictures back here?
Kevin, do you just need, do you have a copy for us, or do you want us to make a copy?
Ryan, is there a way we could put a traffic counter out there on that road? I think as these requests come in, we're going to want to know some kind of a traffic count on these roads.
Just, the only problem with that is, at harvest, we're going to, there'll be a traffic count of a whole bunch of semis, and during the summer, when it's 100 degrees out, then there probably won't be as much traffic on it, so it depends when you put it.
But I think when we talk about this in the budget hearings, I think we need to look at these a year in advance, not, you know, the year of...
That'd be part of the procedure process.
It's got to be part of the procedure process, and then it gives me time to gather the information.
One of the things that brought this on the rush factor was that semi driving over that railing and disturbing the, we weren't planning on doing anything. We were going to start looking, I think, but that did bring it on a little quicker, so...
Yeah, just please approach the podium though.
Yeah, I'm Bob Lucas. I'm also on Mayfield Township. Just so you guys know what's happening here, we've had four different engineers out there. We started out with LTAP from Brookings down, an engineer from Holloway, one from that outfit, bought this outfit in town here, and Clark, I believe. They all said the semis are what's going to take this bridge down. He said the farm traffic is heavy, but it's slow, and this road has a hump in it, and the semis hit that. And Brian Olson from Holloway said, if you think you've got problems now, wait till a semi goes through there, you'll have a lawsuit, which he's probably right. And also, just, there's eight farms in this three-mile section from 46 to the Midway Oil, which is kind of unusual nowadays. There's eight places. And like Kevin said, a lot of big farms. Also, Jamesville Township has no through roads over there because of the Jim River. So, we get, even the Jamesville Township farmers use that road. They come up 46, turn, go up that road, go back to the Midway Road and go west, because they have no other way to go through, and they're not going to go through with their semis in the fall at the port if they don't have to. And as far as the traffic count, at the peak time, like October at harvest time, I would estimate there's 1,000 trucks on that road. Ceasus have five semis.
In how many days?
One day. But this is just right at peak harvest, when you've got five or six people harvesting.
You think it'd be beneficial now to, you know, when the port's open, to maybe have motor carrier enforcement out on that road?
We've talked to them. They won't get off their chair to come over there and look.
How about if we put in a request for the sheriff to contact motor carriers and put a patrol out?
Well, I've had several neighbors have walked into the port of entry and told those guys, these trucks are bypassing.
How many miles is it from there to the nearest weight station?
A mile.
A mile.
It's two miles.
Right.
It's a corner.
James, James...
It's cutting the water. Even, even, forget about the port, the fact that all these trucks, I mean, it is a, it's a needed road, and we want to do it right. So, to do it right, we want to do this either way, you know, but...
Right.
I think we'll have an answer for you by the end of July.
Right, well, and then just to finish up here, like Jamesville Colony sells thousands of turkeys, guess where they go? The Mexicans buy machinery at Weeman's, guess where they go? So, I live on this road, so I'm kind of, and I bought dust control myself for my, where I live, but paid for that myself. But anyway, this, we've had four engineers tell us this bridge is going to go down.
And you guys are scheduled to have it late fall.
Well, we can't, there's nothing else you can do about it. This, with this box culvert, you have to get it ordered. We just got it ordered. Forterra is going to build it at Mitchell, and it probably won't be built until November. And, you know, the four middle sections are like 40,000 pounds apiece, and the end sections are 28,000. So, it takes two cranes to swing this in there, so it's quite a project, actually. And there's so much debris in this, the way it sits is a farm place there, and that's their grove of trees. And, well, you've seen it. And they said putting in two culverts would be nothing but a bridge to block the logs and take the road out. Thank you.
We'll have an answer for you by the end of July.
Have you guys considered closing it down since it's unsafe?
Brian, you know, we used to restrict just local trucks only on 444. I don't know if it's still posted that way. Could we do something like that to maybe deter some of them?
The township can buy the signs from the county.
That's a township responsibility. We don't have that responsibility.
You do have no through truck signs.
Yeah, there's a sign, no through trucks.
Can we ask for more enforcement from the sheriff?
Yes, well, I'll talk to Jim and...
Did you talk to Sergeant Doug Bradmore?
I didn't talk to no one, though.
Because I think it's a $100 sign for the bypass of the port.
We'll just let the, we'll let the sheriff do extra patrol out there, and have him contact the motor carriers, because they're the ones that can enforce that, so. And then we'll have an answer for you though by the end of July in regards to the funding aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is request for contribution from Aspire, formerly Adjustment Training Center.
It's just a...
Is this a budget?
It's just a yearly budget.
Oh, it's for the budget?
Request, yeah. And I'll just make a copy to put it in your budgets.
Oh.
Okay, so that, we'll address that on the budget starting next week. All right. Last item on the agenda is executive session for personnel issue. I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait for Don before we vote. Got Ray's motion and Deb's a second. We have a motion to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda is just items for next meeting.
No discussion, no, no decision.
Oh, thank you, yeah, no decision was made, no action taken, I should say, in executive session. Items for next meeting agenda, again, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 19th, which is also the day of the ag gala, so...
If you don't want to be...
I would like to keep the agenda rather abbreviated so we can be at the ag gala by 6:00. I think that's the time it starts.
Yes.
For those who want to attend, any items we need to discuss? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Gary? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.